Welcome, everybody, to today's work session. I want to formally welcome Elizabeth Duffy to today's work session. She's not sworn in yet. We'll have that at our next July session, but she's able to sit with us today as we gear up for next year. So, welcome. We're happy to have you here today. But I will let Dr. Knoll take over on our updates on the board retreat, and then we'll move into college and career access following that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have a little bit of information that I'll share with you, just so you can prepare for the upcoming board retreat, which will be on August 25th. One of the things, as we go through there, we'll go through the district priorities and update that for you as well. We'll also talk, we'll have a report from our behavior team, and they'll give a very comprehensive report. That's something that we've been asked in the spring of the year, some information on that. So they'll come through and give a very comprehensive report on that, as far as staffing, programming, a lot of new things that we are going through and working on, and piloted last year that we will have into full implementation this next year here. So that'll be a great report for you to be able to find out information on that. There's also going to be, I'm going to skip to number four, but we'll also go through some board conflict of interest and general protocols information, and then attendance grant outcomes, if we were to have time. So we always know that sometimes it runs a little bit long, so put that in there, and we'll have that information prepared, and if we do not get to that, we'll put it on a work session or a board report later on. But I wanted to make sure that you have some of that information. One of the things to think about prior to the board retreat, and I will send this information to you so you have it, because it'd be very difficult to read on the three-slide format that you have, especially with a small font, and to see it up there as well. But there's forty-some different topics that, as we went through with our central leadership team that we put on, the different individuals with their different departments who would be open to, willing to, and wanting to share with the board. We will not be able to get to every single one of these, obviously. And you may have other things that you wish to have presented upon, information that you would like to hear more about. So this will give you kind of a general overview of some of the different things that are being worked on, as far as the large tasks or targets with each of the individual departments. And so before we have that work session on the 25th of August, if you were to go through that list, and as I said, I'll send it to you in a much more readable format, and look at things that you would love to have highlighted, and we'll talk about that at the August 25th board retreat. So if there's things on there, you'd say, yes, I absolutely want to know more about this area. This is something more specific. We'll see whether that fits best in a work session, or if it fits best as just a general board report. And then there could be some other topics that you would have in mind that I did not have listed on there, that you would like to hear more information on as well. But we did pull those. These are all from the individuals who would oversee those specific areas. Some of these you will also see in the strategic plan. If it's in the strategic plan, more than likely to hear a board report on that regardless of. And so we make sure that we highlight those top things that we're working on within the Sioux Falls School District. And so that list is a fairly comprehensive list, as you go through all forty-some of those. And any other questions you'd have on that, I'd be happy to answer. But that's kind of just a general overview of what we'll look at at the board retreat, and we'll try to put them in a very, a good order, so that we know that we have time, and if need be, we will just hit on that attendance one at a later date. Any questions on the upcoming board retreat?
I would imagine that that agenda planning is kind of a moving, living, dynamic document, and as things, just so we all know, as things may surface, that we can make changes to adapt to whatever the climate needs.
Absolutely. And anytime with, you know, our strategic plan, we want that to be, obviously, a fluid document, that we can change things in there. There's things that we'll identify that will probably have impact over one, two, three, five years worth of time, that we'll continue to work on, and by no means does the strategic plan encompass all the things that we are doing. There's so much more well beyond that. But every individual that's in a leadership role does have goals that they establish, multiple goals, and we look at those, and what are some of the top ones there that they are working on to have an impact on students and student outcomes within the Sioux Falls School District? And that'll change, because we may go two, three months into the school year, and some of those may become completed. Or due to other things that are unforeseen, they may not be able to be fulfilled at this point in time, so they're put off at a different time. And so that is a living, breathing document that we can change and alter, and if there's other things that eventually come up as a priority area, we want to make sure we get that in there. But you see some of the big rocks that we'll have, some of those things, as far as the bond and the preparation, the input from our community, and the steps that we'll take in that. The behavior teaming process, we'll make sure that we have those in there. Attendance is always a thing that we will continue to work on. The academic outcomes, you hear a report coming up on UFLI, and that's the reading program that's with our elementary students. And so that one, I'm hoping to already put into, Ms. McDaniel will give that report, and we put that into September, hopefully get that into one of the board reports in September. So you at least get an update on that information. A lot of very good things happening with that. But as we go through, and you start to hear more of those reports and that information, as we get closer to the budget time, you kind of have a general idea, then, of where some of those priority areas are at. Other questions? The other amount of time that we're going to be working on here is really working with the Promising Futures and the College and Career Access partnership that we have with Promising Futures in the Sioux Falls School District. And so you'll hear from a few individuals today, just to go through and highlight that information, and we do, with the Sioux Falls School District, have multiple partnerships with our community. That's a significant emphasis we'll have. You're going to hear a few different ones as we go through this school year, and especially this fall, as we look at a few of those and highlight those for you. I think that's a great thing to be able to bring forward to our community, so they hear, one, as board members, and, two, that our community has that information. One of the ones that has been a very strong one for us has been Promising Futures. And so as we look a little bit with the Promising Futures and Steve Hildebrand, who will say a few words here in a couple moments, most of you were able to attend, and some were not able to attend, but the South Dakota Hall of Fame Acts of Excellence Award was given to Steve Hildebrand this last week, and there was a nice reception down at the Washington Pavilion to recognize that. And the area that they really worked on was that transforming poverty into possibility. But there's a few different areas that Steve has worked on, and he'll highlight some of that for us as we go through, but it was just a great honor and very deserving. If you talk to many of our building principals, whether that be in the elementary, and predominantly in the elementary, but middle school and high school as well, just a lot of the things that we've been able to work with Promising Futures on, to give our students additional access that we may maybe not be able to do within our budgetary constraints. And so we've been greatly appreciative of that, and his work in leading those efforts to go through and provide those services for our students. And so we congratulate him, obviously, on receiving that award and recognition, and we'll have him come forward and just say a few words to be able to highlight some of those areas of the Promising Futures program. To start with, there's a short video, be able to see, that encapsulates some of that information.
Creating more opportunities for high school graduates in Sioux Falls. That's the goal of a new program being rolled out by Promising Futures.
The nonprofit supports low-income students and schools with high rates of poverty in the Sioux Falls School District. Kellalands Tom Hanson explores the new program.
The goal is to provide a higher level of guidance for students seeking access to college, technical school, careers in the military, or the workforce. The new program will begin at Jefferson High School in August. College and career advisors will work directly with students getting ready to graduate. Promising Futures founder, Steve Hildebrand, says the new program is designed to provide additional assistance to seniors in what can be a complicated process.
There is about fifty-five percent of kids in our school district that go on to college or technical school. The rest of the state's at about seventy-two percent. So it's a big disparity, and again, it has everything to do with low-income kids not thinking they can afford college.
Hildebrand says if high school graduates really want to go on and get that four-year degree, there are pathways, but this program is not just about college.
But this is about helping kids get out of poverty, period. Nobody should have to live in poverty. What we want to do is help them find that path. It could be college, technical school, military, directly into the workforce. We just want kids to have that chance to live a good life, and that's good for everybody.
The Promising Futures Fund has donated $400,000 to the Sioux Falls School District to fund the first year of the program. They're also starting a $1.3 million fundraising campaign to fund the full program at all four high schools the following school year. Tom Hanson, Kellaland News.
Knoll, thank you for inviting me here and to the board members. Appreciate the time. We are excited, nervous, scared about moving ahead with this program. I've been looking at this for about two and a half years. I was connected through a friend to a gentleman in Washington, D.C., where they've been running a college access program for about twenty-four years, and it's a very well-regarded, very well-respected. The metrics in the D.C. School District were in the thirties at the time, and they have been able to move them up to the national average through the work they've done. So I went to D.C., spent a lot of time with him, and he introduced me to the staff at D.C. CAP to start learning exactly how the program can be implemented. And then we've also spent time with the folks at the Cleveland Scholarship Program, at their program called College Now. And what I would say is, the implementation of our program will probably be closer to College Now than it is to the D.C. program. The D.C. program's moved a little bit, changed a little bit over the years, so a little bit different than what they were originally doing. The numbers that I talked about in the video or in the Kellal interview, about seventy-two percent is older. So Mr. Conrad will go, if you have to call him, this is just awkward, the whole suit and once in a green shirt. Mr. Conrad will go through those numbers and tell you from 2020 to the end of 2024 what the current numbers are. But I'll say, at Jefferson, those numbers were fifty-two percent. And so we look at that as a growth opportunity, not as something we want to sweep under the rug. And what I've told folks at Jefferson is, we have to embrace that number. We have to own that number. And if we own that number, and the entire school rallies behind that as an opportunity for growth and helping kids find a better path, we're going to look at that. And so I'm excited about this. I'm nervous about the fundraising side of it. We're trying to bring in $1.3 million of private funds into the school district to run this program. I am very happy with the partnership we've been creating. Been working with Dan, one of his principal, and Howell Worchers, the head of counseling out there, for the last two years, to try and figure out how we could implement this program. Dr. Knoll and I have spent a lot of time over the last few months hammering out a lot of the details of how it can be implemented within the school district. We've created a memorandum of understanding to get a good understanding on both sides as to how we run this partnership, how this money is going to come from the outside. We've worked with Todd Vick on creating an account so that the money we bring in goes into that account, the expenses related to the program, related to staffing, benefits, expenses related to college visits, and those kinds of stuff will come out of that, and we can have a clean accounting of income and expenses related to the program. We have just hired a director, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, and we've gone through the interview process to hire four college and career advisors. One of them accepted today, we'll leave that announcement till a little bit later. Hopefully, the other three will make it through the process and accept these positions. Our director will start on July 7th. The advisors will start on August 4th, in advance of students arriving, so that they can go through extensive training, get a good understanding of what we can do and what we can't do related to advising kids, students, and start looking hard at how we want to help kids explore their future. This is not just a college program. This is not telling every kid, you should go to college, because not every kid should. It's not for everybody. And even if kids are capable and they don't want to go, there's lots of other pathways to go. So this is increasing more opportunities for technical schools, for pathways into the military, for full-time and part-time, which can lead to a great opportunity to get a free education following your service. And then also looking for great opportunities for students to go directly from high school graduation over to the workforce, finding a career path, not just job hopping for the rest of their life. So I think it's going to be very successful. I like the fact that we're expanding this beyond college and technical schools, and really helping kids find their path out of poverty, because in the end, that's what's going to make a better community, that's going to make better citizens, and something we can all be very, very proud of. When I worked with folks in D.C. and Cleveland, they said, do not move this forward if you don't have scholarship programs to match the work we're going to do. And so we do. We have the Build Dakota Scholarships at our four technical schools across the state. We will forge tremendous partnerships. Our advisors will become incredibly diligent about knowing what's available there, how the Build Dakota Scholarship works, working very closely with admissions and financial aid in those areas. And then at the college level, with the Freedom Scholarship Program, there are ten universities across the state, public and private, that have opted into the Freedom Scholarship Program. This is an opportunity for students to receive between $4,000 and $6,000 per year towards their education. Both Build Dakota and Freedom Scholarships are needs-based. Those are the kids that are going to get the vast majority of our attention, but it's going to be really important that we'll never turn away an opportunity to work with a student at Jefferson who wants our advice, our help. This will be a program that does, I hate the term hand-holding, but that's what it's going to be. We're going to help kids navigate that path for whatever their future is. We will work closely with students and their families. The advisors will work the hours that are needed within their forty, so if it's an evening meeting with a student, mom and dad, or an opportunity on Saturday, because that's when the parents are available, the staff will do that. But this is increasing the amount of navigation we can help students do, as the counselors are already brought in so much. So the plan right now is to run this at Jefferson the first year, with the idea that we spend the next ten months trying to raise the 1.3 million that would allow us to move this to Lincoln, Washington, and Roosevelt, and placing four advisors in each of those schools as well. So a total of sixteen college and career advisors. At that point, I think we're going to be able to move numbers in a big way, and really impact a lot of kids' lives for a better future. So I'm excited about it, nervous about it, anxious about it, but really glad we're in this for this time, and I do believe our community in Sioux Falls is ready to support this, otherwise I wouldn't come through.
Thank you, Steve. Steve gave a pretty broad, but also specific explanation to the program, which we appreciate. The purpose of today is to give a little bit more detail as to what college and career access looks like at the Sioux Falls School District. So we start out with a couple of introductions. Steve had mentioned Jessica Carlson is our director. She's in the house here. And also partnering with Holly Seavison, our counseling department chair, and Lance Stevenall, our principal of Jefferson High School, who will be helping to ensure the program is ran successfully as we go through it. A little bit about Promising Futures and this partnership, Steve had mentioned, it's been a two- or three-year conversation about ideas. Promising Futures has always been really good about coming to the Sioux Falls School District and saying, what do you guys need? And what does the dream look like, and how do we help support kids make that end leap? It connects with our academic, district priorities in the area of academic success, the initiative of college and career readiness skills. We've also heard this from previous community listening sessions and engagement sessions that we've been through, where we have community members staying up. We would like, we need a little bit more support. We don't know what we don't know. How do we get to the end? Which is education, whether it's a college, two-year, four-year college degree, maybe it's a military career opportunities, first responder opportunities, those professional career opportunities. So again, through the generous gift of $400,000 from Promising Futures, our goal is to start, and we will start, career access at Jefferson High School in the fall of 2025. What does that mean? And kind of why Jefferson? It's a continuation of the work that's been done at our middle schools, which started at George McGovern, and providing eighth graders exposure to college and career opportunities, and it started with field trips. So we look at bringing it to Jefferson High School as a continuation of that program for students, which began in Northwest Sioux Falls at George. And so we've got some baseline already in place that we can pick up at the high school level and continue it on, and that's why we're starting with Jefferson High School, where the idea came from, with the goal of expanding to all the public high schools. So what does the $400,000 provide? It provides a director and four career and college access advisors, which will all be housed at Jefferson High School. And it's not replacing any one service or anything like that. It's truly amplifying the services and supports we already provide. And that's the message you're going to hear a little bit more, is it's about amplifying what we already do, enhancing the programs we have, because we have a lot of good programs already in place, but we just need a little bit more lift support. When we think about the goals, as was mentioned, to break that poverty cycle and to expose students and increase not only student, but parent awareness. So while we're working with kids, and we know that kids are available during the school day, parents are available different times, so it's also opening up outside the school hours. So the goal is to meet with parents and families, students outside the school day, whether that be on a night, or whether it be on a weekend, to provide that support. The data, updating the data from the National Student Clearinghouse, and you will have a future board report, more depth on National Student Clearinghouse data, but it reports back the graduates that are entering college the fall immediately after high school graduation. So when we say the state's at sixty percent of the 2024 graduating class entered college in August, that following fall, the Sioux Falls School District's at fifty-five percent, and Jefferson's at fifty-two percent in the fall. That number goes up a little bit when you look at any time during that first year, and it goes up a little bit more when you look into year number two. But right now, this is our starting place. How do we help get kids from graduation at Sioux Falls Arena into college access in that fall? And there's a lot that goes into it. When you think about numbers, this is from the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics. They're talking about the median weekly income, anywhere from no high school to diploma, all the way up to a doctoral degree. Another way to think about that is lifetime earnings. When you look at lifetime earnings of a student with a high school diploma, and this is, when we say lifetime, it's from age twenty-five to age sixty-four is where the data comes from, and it comes from Georgetown University Center on Education and Workforce. High school graduates, lifetime, one point six is the median. When we look at some college at one point nine million, if we can get them to the door and experience some college, or all the way up to that Bachelor of Arts degree, towards two point eight million. The difference in impact is anywhere from three hundred thousand to one point two million in a lifetime. And that's moving people and providing opportunities for kids, which provides opportunities for our community of Sioux Falls. At this time, I'm going to invite Holly Seavison up to the front here to share a little bit more about what CCA will look like at Jefferson High School in that partnership with the counseling department and Jefferson High School CCA. counseling department and Jefferson High School CCA.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Hello, everyone. Steve, thank you so much for this gift from Promising Futures. I remember when we first started talking about this and like five people? Okay, so Steve has this way of, you know, just do something a little bit, like you're going to do it, go big. And we just couldn't be more thankful for this gift. And we're really looking forward to working with Jessica and the advisors. And I know I speak for Mr. Seavenall when we say welcome. We're very thankful. Also, it's Mr. Conrad and Dr. Noel, thanks for backing this, supporting it. It's going to be, it's going to be really good. So the work that we're already doing as school counselors will fit in really well with this program. The focus will be on students who are the first in their family to attend college, those underserved populations, people that need extra support, because a lot of times, you know, there's the college application and it's just a matter of how do I fill this out? Where do I find this number? Who do I send this to? Sometimes how to address an envelope? I mean, it's all of those things together. Promising Future sees the need and fills the need. So things that are currently in place, our school counselors and teaching staff, we do career lessons in the classroom. We do provide college visits and a lot of assistance, same with teachers. CTE Academy and dual credit opportunities give students a chance to try on different careers and try out college classes before committing to them, so they have an idea of what they're interested in. We also have programs such as JAG and Trio. JAG is Jobs for America's Graduates. They do industry tours, they do college visits, they bring in speakers. It's a great program we have. It's accessible to any student in our district. And also the Trio program, that's a federally funded program that is something that goes with kids from middle school into high school, helping with all of those details of getting to college and career. The access advisors will work closely with us as we go. So some of the specifics with this would be that college and career access advisory that I just talked about, and then kind of the blocking and tackling of the financial aid access. For example, sitting with a student for an hour or two, filling out the FAFSA, helping explain that to a parent. There's a lot of little details that can get confusing and get students bogged down, and then they're maybe thinking, I can't do this, it's too much, and my counselor isn't available today. Well, we're going to have a whole team of people that will not only make sure you fill that out, but make sure you fill it out correctly. We have apprenticeship opportunities already in our buildings at Jefferson and at the other high schools. We do a week of work, and we bring in representatives from the community for our students to meet. The advisors then could also meet these folks and make those connections senior year and beyond. And then military options and awareness, it's a great road to go to get your college paid for. There are certifications and opportunities that are available nowhere else through the military. We'll do that together. And then with college retention, the advisors will be able to follow those senior students on into college, so not only filling out the paperwork, doing what they need to do, but making sure they actually set foot on campus, have the resources they need to make it through their first year. That's kind of the vision for that. And with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Conrad for any questions you might have.
And just before you start with the questions, as you can see, there's so many incredible partnerships that we have in the Sioux Falls community here and that we make sure that we bring into our schools. And I think that's going to be a critical part to make sure that they come into our schools, see our schools. We have incredible kids and we have great families that support those kids within our schools, but to be able to partner with a lot of the agencies and entities within the community here will just only enhance that. And that's truly what this program will be able to do. It doesn't replace counselors, it just amplifies what they're doing and takes it to another level. It sees a need of where we're maybe not quite getting some of it. We've been working on that at an elementary level all the way through to know that they can go to college, they can go to technical school, they can go to the military. It's more so about what they can do instead of limiting their options of what they cannot do, because they maybe were not prepared or unaware of what they could be able to do. So it's really going to help to amplify a lot of those things that our counselors are currently doing. And so we look forward to that part. But questions you may have?
First of all, I would just like to say thank you to all of you, Mr. Hildebrand, Mr. Conrad, Dr. Noel, for making this happen. It's great. My question is, are you going to put emphasis on seniors this upcoming school year and then work down the grades, or is it open for 9 through 12?
So we have a lot to figure out. That's the best answer. The way I've envisioned this, the way we've kind of talked about it, is for ninth and 10th graders, we'll probably do larger group activities, such as taking all the ninth graders to visit a college campus, a follow-up to the eighth grade trips that we're already doing, but going to a different campus for a different experience. So the ninth grade trip would likely be a deeper dive into the academic paths that a child could, that a student could choose, and a deeper dive into the finances, which we don't really go into much in the eighth grade. So they're in high school now, it's got to be more serious discussions. So I could see us doing those kinds of trips also to technical schools, and not just to Southeast Tech, but to the area ones as well. When we get to the juniors and seniors, it's going to be a lot more individualized efforts. It could be we invite the military in for a luncheon lunch, and 30 students could sign up to participate in that. We put them in a classroom with our advisor, with a military recruiter, and give them the opportunity to talk to students in a broader way. So it could be a group of 30, but there's going to be, there's a lot of one-on-one, helping kids figure out what they want to be, helping kids figure out which path they want to take, helping students with applications and FAFSA and that kind of stuff. We've talked to SDSU, they created a program this past year, copied from another university outside the state called the Fiesta FAFSA, FAFSA Fiesta, where they invite students and families to come in, have tacos in the taco bar, and then do a presentation about how to fill out the FAFSA, and then have financial aid staff there to specifically work with individual students and their parents to complete it and actually file it. So it's just a higher level. They want to come in and partner with us, as I'm sure we'll find with a lot of colleges and universities. So it's a kind of a broad answer to your question.
Thank you.
I also want to echo the, the thanks to everybody who put their hands in this and really go forward. Special thanks to you, Steve. I remember your Culture Con speech, when you took the numbers by the horns and really broadcasted where our deficits are, but you didn't run from them. You presented them and said, how can we tackle this together in front of a room of 600 people? And I applaud you for that, because I know this is probably one of the many workings and results of you just being honest. And it's okay to be honest. And right now, as we're faced with scrutiny of public schools, it's okay to be honest with our numbers and then draw in community and lean in with it versus run from it. So this is just one of the ways that I, I'm really looking forward to it. And as a person who really would have benefited from this, I'm a part of the 2% club, meaning I'm only 2% of Native American people make it into graduate-level school and complete it. So I could have really used something like this, and it makes me really excited that I have two young girls who are going to be at Whittier, and they're going to be able to have access to these sort of things, because I still don't know the process and I still struggle, and the fact that they're going to have different access points growing in our district to make sure that us as parents can navigate this more successfully, they feel confident in their choices. I just, I'm really thankful. I'm just really thankful for what we're taking by the horns and we're not running from it. And I apologize, Dr. Noel. Congratulations on your first work session in your first two days. I should have opened with that. But if we could, I know I'm interrupting a little bit, but I really feel like we should give Steve, his team, and Dr. Noel a round of applause for everything that they've done already on day two. I just invite you guys to, to share that embrace with me. So thank you guys for everything so far.
Hey, Steve, you have 10 months, 1.3 million to raise. If people are interested, how do they move forward and communicate with you?
Google my name, my phone number, and email address will come up. I'm happy to meet with anybody in the community or in the area who has an interest in investing in this program. We already have a decent start, some cash in the bank to start us for a year from now. This year is paid for through some very generous community donors. I'm there.
Okay, Promising Futures?
Yep. PromisingFuturesFund.org is our website, but my name and phone number are all over the place, so reach out.
Other questions? And I know it's easy to be at Oversight, because I've been here 30 years, so day one on the job for this one. And I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean that in a very good way, because very comfortable. So a lot of very good things, and we'll hear about that as we go through the next upcoming months about some other partnerships that we have. Each one looking at different areas to make an impact for the Sioux Falls School District. Obviously, the one today is one that's had an impact on students and giving them opportunities. There's been a couple of games I've been to up at SDSU, and I looked across, we have a student section over there from the Sioux Falls School District, which is incredible to be able to see that and to talk to President Dunn and saying, oh yeah, they've been up here, and others that work with the group there, Vernon Brown, and just the opportunities those kids have had. So this one, obviously, today is to highlight that. The MOU has already gone through the board, and that has been agreed upon, and we're working through that process. But truly excited to see what that can do for kids as it expands from this year with the five individuals to next year being the 17 individuals. So looking forward to that, and we thank our community partners such as Promising Futures for doing that, and just an incredible thing that they've taken on. So thank you to them. Other questions the board may have? That is all we have.
Anything else for the board today? Could I get a motion to adjourn? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posing sign. We are adjourned.